Good evening and welcome to Monday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, city council meeting here at six P M. at City Capitol Chambers at one eleven East Maple Avenue. Our invocation will be given by Reverend Mike Jones from Grace Connection Church. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Jones?
(Inaudible)
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember McCandless?
Here.
Councilmember Wiley?
Here.
Councilmember Vaught?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here. We have one proclamation this evening. And this is from the Sons of American Revolution. And Stephen Sullivan will be receiving this proclamation this evening, and I'll share some of it with you. So whereas the people did ordain and establish a constitution of the United States of America to secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and for our posterity, and whereas it is important for all citizens to fully understand the provisions and principles and meaning of the Constitution so they can support, preserve, and defend it against encroachment; and whereas the Constitution Week provides an opportunity for all Americans to learn about and to reflect upon the rights and privileges of citizenship and its responsibility; and whereas September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five marks the two hundred and thirty-eighth anniversary of signing of the Constitution of the United States by our founders; and whereas the Constitution by a joint resolution on February twenty-ninth, nineteen fifty-two, designated seventeen, excuse me, September seventeenth as Citizenship Day and be a joint resolution on August second, nineteen fifty-six, requested that the President proclaim the week beginning the September seventeenth and ending September twenty-third of each year as Constitution Week. And it is fitting to accord the official, of the official city, recognition of this important anniversary. And whereas the city council commends the Independence Patriot Chapter of the Sons Michael, come for, and do we have any non-citizens? of Amer- American Revolution for lending leadership and promoting this historic and patriotic observance and preserving our cherished American heritage. Okay. Michael, come forward. You'll have five minutes, and please state your name and address, please. So it is our privilege as a council to recommend and present this proclamation.
(Inaudible)
There you go.
(Inaudible)
I don't think we can hear him. And Stephen Sullivan, please come forward so you can receive this on behalf of your I don't see if it's working. Hold on. We're not taking your time away, trust me.
Oh, no worries.
We'll give you the full time while it's working. chapter.
The full forty-five minutes, thank you.
Thank you.[284.00][284.00](Applause)
I think I'm heard now. Is that okay?
Is that working?
It's working now.
All right, perfect.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and councilpersons, for allowing me to speak on this evening. Again, we are in the community at thirteen sixteen South Osage Street. I am the pastor of a church plant that's happening there in the Old Cornerstone Church. And so we are here tonight because we are also launching a pre-K program at the same facility that will address a need that I believe our community has for early childhood education. Our program specifically looks at serving about forty-nine students within our city and our district to assist with kindergarten readiness. We have received different partnerships. And so as of our last zoning meeting, we were required to do some adjustments or some upgrades to our facility, which we have accomplished as of today. We were able to make sure our lighting is appropriate for our community, to make sure that we are also looking at the parking structure. We added two of the van accessibility parking spots. We have also made sure that we have the proper fencing around the area of our facility. Our program seeks to help children who are displaced because of homelessness or maybe house and foster care services within the Independence School District area. And so we have been doing this now for five years. I have been a pastor of the church for the last fifteen years. And so Mayor had given me forty-five minutes to do a vacation this morning, this afternoon, but I only took three minutes, so I'll get the rest of it on Sunday morning. But we're just here to add value to the community and do our best to be a good neighbor. And so our goal is to make sure that we add value and serve our community at large. And I appreciate the time on this evening to allow, to address you all of our initiatives of ours. So thank you again for your time and your consideration. We appreciate all that you do.
Thank you very much. Next up is Lucy Young. And Lucy, you'll have five minutes for this topic. And you know the drill. State your name and your address, please.
I do know the drill. Lucy Young, twenty-three twenty Viking Drive, Independence, Missouri, six four oh five seven. Nolan Road is essentially the tail of three eyesores. To the south is Nolan Fashion Square. Decaying buildings and problems with vagrants are well-known. The developer used that CID to prevent the city from demolishing those buildings. In May of two thousand and twenty-five, it was announced that the developer could buy much of that retail area and convert it into a light manufacturing plant. To the north is Lakeside Development, AKA the Santa Fe Tiff, a financial time bomb paid for by city-backed bonds. The developer asked the city to use eminent domain to take out viable taxpaying businesses, which actually created one of the most blighted areas on Nolan Road: an unkept eyesore, a busted-up concrete, and a fence surrounding a toxic doubt slate. There is currently a construction trailer close to that location building the new auto collision repair. There, and then there's the venture Kmart building. The city used DARPA funds to demolish it, and everyone was glad to see it go. Then a miracle happened on the Miracle Mile. Wally's bought that property. Wally's paid over two-and-a-half million dollars in back taxes, and the Independence School District received eight-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars. Wally's repaid the city's two-hundred thousand dollars for demolition, too. Wally's wants to partner with Independence, but not in a way any developer has ever done so in the past. Wally's did not come to our city without stretched hands looking for a Tiff. Finally, a developer who puts his money where his mouth is. Wally's wants to personally invest five to seven million dollars to rebuild Nolan Road and I seventy-two. I have never heard of any other developer ever making that offer. Wally's wants to work with the surrounding neighborhood, and there will be a six-foot masonry wa- buffer wall built. Wally's will provide onsite security, and their manager patrols the property once an hour, too. This will ensure the vagrant problem is addressed. Wally's has done numerous traffic studies, hydrology studies, and even had scientifically-backed equipment to measure one one-hundredth of a gallon of any loss of gasoline. None of that came cheaply. Tonight, you're going to hear a lot of talk about both traffic and benzene. Some of the same discussion about traffic was heard when the Cargo Largo came before the council. And I sent all of you today the news article from the Examiner that showed the difficulties when Cargo Largo was opening and the road sport, roadwork wasn't completed. There were concerns about all the eighteen-wheelers bringing in products, the three hundred KCMO employees moving into the Independence location, the nine-hundred-and-fifty-nine parking spaces that exceeded the city's standard. That's a lot of traffic. Cargo Largo is building in phases, and only Phase One has been completed. Those additional phases will bring in more traffic as well. Cargo Largo had to make some road repairs and construct two new streets. Almost three-point-five million dollars in infrastructure costs will be reimbursed to the developer from the street sales tax, one-point-seven million, and the Nolan Road Sid, one-point-seven million. But all, have all of those improvements been completed? Benzene. The state of Missouri D N R requires that all gas stations build to a Phase One standard. Phase Two is not required in any U.S. state with the exception of California. So why would the city of Independence require anything above that standard? Wally's will put in a lot of measures to protect the environment. So here's the facts about Nolan Road: the good, the bad, the ugly. The good is this opportunity if Wally's is approved. The bad is the Nolan Road Fashion Square, and the ugly is the Santa Fe Tiff area. After nearly thirty years with no forward progress, it is dragging down Nolan Road. Maybe the Cargo Largo and Wally's can help lift that boat. Wally's is consistent with the Independence for All Strategic Plan and the Imagine Independence two thousand and forty plan. Both called to promote growth, investment, and opportunity.
You have one minute, ma'am.
Wally's development plan aligns with that guiding principle. Wally's redevelopment project will have a positive impact on a highly visible interchange at Nolan and I seventy. Wally's will provide much-needed economic boosts to our community with additional new jobs, the capital investment of their facility, and the investment of five to seven million dollars to correct the traffic situation. That reflects a deep commitment to the city. The, the city doesn't have the money to fix Nolan Road traffic problem. The general fund needs new taxes. Please approve the Wally's. And yes, I read this to the Planning Commission, but when I added it to the record, they had me as a cheerleader for economic growth and didn't really talk about what I spoke about: the economic depression on Nolan Road and how it must be lifted. Please vote for Wally's.
Thank you. Next up is Michael Talcott. Michael, you'll have five minutes, and please state your name and address, please.
Mike Talca at nineteen oh one Lake Drive, Independence. Evening, council. If Independence is serious about trying to increase tourism, you must realize you have been handed a gift that no amount of marketing dollars can buy. Wally's attracts people who are already on an adventure. They cater to RVs and travelers on road trips. They actually are a destination stop in itself. So rather than these travelers heading on a few miles into KC, Wally's is giving them a reason to stop in Independence. If leadership were smart, they'd partner with Wally's and set up an information booth or counter with all kinds of brochures and information about what else there is to see in Independence while they're here. Wally's is right at the main corridor into the city. Just point folks down Nolan Road to the square, museums, and shops, including Cargo Largo, on their way. And speaking of cargo, there were many concerns about its expansion with traffic and semis, especially across from Truman High School, but we're surviving it. Even the increased noise from the trains along Nolan, Nolan Road bouncing off their warehouse down into our little valley now. We didn't anticipate that. You would think they'd be excited for possible increased customers and sales. In any case, Wally's has already invested a lot of time and money into this project. They're not coming here with hands held out, asking for the city to help pay for their project. They actually want to tie into city's great American story, the Queen City of the Trails, and be part of it. And as I said before, the Planning Commission, if you don't approve this project, you will be sending a chilling message to other developers that it doesn't matter what or how much you do. Independence is not the place to bring a business. This is also the type of industrial electrical rate business we are supposedly trying to attract to help offset our residential electric rates. Please don't miss this opportunity. Please approve the Wally's ordinance twenty-five oh eight seven special use permit when it comes up for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Valerie Burns. Valerie, please state your name and address, please, and you'll have five minutes. And it's fine. You don't have to walk that fast.
Valerie Burns, three oh eight West Maple Avenue, here in Independence. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here representing the Independence Chamber of Commerce as president and C E O. I have a short statement to share in support of the development project for Wally's on Nolan Road. The Independence Chamber of Commerce represents more than six hundred local businesses that employ tens of thousands of local workers. Those businesses are committed to making positive impacts in Independence. Our core purpose as a chamber is to provide leadership that builds a business community of excellence. As such, the chamber supports economic development along Nolan Road, recognizing its historic significance and potential to attract visitors. We encourage collaboration between the city and the development team of the proposed Wally's gas station. As the city's economic development partner, the chamber is proud to support this project and others in the pipeline that signal a bright future for Independence. We look forward to a collaborative and proactive relationship with Wally's leadership team moving forward. We ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Lee Phillips. And Lee, you'll have five minutes. And it's fine. You don't have to walk that fast.
Valerie Burns, three oh eight West Maple Avenue, here in Independence. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here representing the Independence Chamber of Commerce as president and C E O. I have a short statement to share in support of the development project for Wally's on Nolan Road. The Independence Chamber of Commerce represents more than six hundred local businesses that employ tens of thousands of local workers. Those businesses are committed to making positive impacts in Independence. Our core purpose as a chamber is to provide leadership that builds a business community of excellence. As such, the chamber supports economic development along Nolan Road, recognizing its historic significance and potential to attract visitors. We encourage collaboration between the city and the development team of the proposed Wally's gas station. As the city's economic development partner, the chamber is proud to support this project and others in the pipeline that signal a bright future for Independence. We look forward to a collaborative and proactive relationship with Wally's leadership team moving forward. We ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Lee Phillips. And Lee, you'll have five minutes.
Good evening. Lee Phillips, Independence, Missouri. Friends and neighbors, what we've seen from City Hall is not stewardship. It's not leadership. It's a pattern, a pattern of rushing through big-ticket spending, neglecting the basics, and leaving the citizens of Independence to pay the price. For years, this city collected maintenance dollars meant to keep our buildings in good repair. If those funds had been used responsibly, our police headquarters would still be sound. Instead, the money was misspent or ignored. Now leadership tells us the building is beyond repair, and the only answer is a brand-new one-hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar justice center. That's not planning. That's negligence. Repackaged just progress. And it's not just the police building. Our historic landmarks, the pride and identity of Independence, are left to decay. All of this was happening long before the thought of a geobond. Every brick that crumbles represents a choice by leadership to look the other way. Meanwhile, city-owned properties sit empty or underutilized, draining resources. Instead of caring for what we already own, the council races to dream up new schemes treating taxpayers like a bottomless ATM. We've had the Gihaw building for two years now, under a twenty-million-dollar lease purchase option. Two years of opportunity to plan a responsible transition, yet only now, just two months before the move, does city scramble, does the city scramble to ask, what do we do with City Hall? That's not leadership. That's negligence. And the city's top administrator, the one who should have steered this transition, is on his way out the door to another state. He leaves Independence with no roadmap, no plan, and taxpayers left holding the bill.
You can talk about policy. We can't bring individuals up in the process.
Apologize. It's, um, okay. That's, I think that's all I have to say about policy. I mean, I didn't, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
This is just fact. This isn't an isolated failure. It's a pattern. Eight days to move public tax dollars into a private, unauditable nonprofit. Two months to push through nearly two-hundred million in geobond meetings. Two years sitting on the Gihaw before asking what to do with City Hall. It's always rushed when it benefits them and stalled when it hurts us. It's not governance. It's bad stewardship. As citizens feel it. Where is the mandatory return to work? We are still paying for full salaries. Where's the accountability to provide the best customer service in Independence history? We don't have a funding problem. We have a management problem. Look at our parks. A glossy consultant report last week told us that Independence needs more aquatic spaces. But what do citizens see? A water park we spent millions on now closed, collecting mosquito nests deteriorating by the day. Splash pads that should be filled with children instead not working and unusable, which is why I took my grandchildren to the Blue Springs Water Parks this summer. Parks and trails in disrepair, playgrounds unsafe, and facilities neglected. We don't need more consultants. We need leaders who can maintain the spaces we already pay for. And here's the most telling. The council could ask the state auditor for help with one single vote. One vote is all it would take to bring in independent eyes and restore trust. But instead, they shrug. They say, we do an internal audit every year. We're good. Let's be honest, that's like letting the fox count the hens and then assuring us the chicken coop is safe. An internal audit is insiders grading their own homework. Of course, they'll say everything's fine. Citizens don't want excuses. They want accountability, and this council refuses to give it. So what do we have? Maintenance money ignored, historic buildings crumbling, empty facilities collecting dust, two years wasted on Gihaw with no plan. The cities skipped that one because you gavelled me on that one. Parks in shambles while consultants use, tell us we need more, and a council unwilling to accept independent oversight. Neighbors, this isn't stewardship of public money. This is disrespect of public trust.
You have one minute.
Independence deserves better. We deserve leaders who plan ahead, maintain what we own, and serve citizens with integrity. Did you take time away when I was thinking? Anything less is not just poor judgment, it's a betrayal of our past and a burden on our future. And it's no wonder that people leaving the meeting last Monday night were saying it's time to move to Lee Summit. And let's be clear, the people of Independence know what transparency means: open records, open meetings, and accountability. And Mayor, remind you that some on this council openly said they had a, quote, "different definition of transparency" or flat voted against transparency. Those same voices are lining up for the mayor and at-large races in twenty-six. If we keep electing the same people to the dais, we will keep getting the same broken results. Independence cannot afford another cycle of insiders protecting insiders. We, the people, must pay attention because our future and our children's future depend on it. And on one final note, I hope you all vote for Wally's. I think it's a really great thing. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda.
Mayor?
Please proceed.
Make a motion to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager. Would anyone like to pull any items for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'd like to pull item seven, item nine, and item fifteen.
Councilmember McCandless would like to pull item seven, item nine, and item fifteen. Very good. Anyone else want to pull anything for separate consideration? Councilmember Fears or Councilmember Wiley? Just want to make sure, give you a chance. Okay? Very good. Madam City Clerk, let's take the roll for the consent agenda, and we'll vote on the other items that are called for separate consideration in just a moment.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the consent agenda is approved. Six in favors, zero opposed. That brings us to item number seven. Councilmember McCandless, please proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We have, excuse me, Deputy City Manager Lisa Reynolds here to help us this evening. Can you help with giving an outline of the investment in Santa Fe Park? I am assuming that this is part of our regular capital improvement, and this is a scheduled investment in this park property.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Lisa Reynolds, Deputy City Manager. Yes, to your point, Councilwoman, this is part of our scheduled maintenance that this equipment has reached its life expectancy and is simply being replaced as a product of time served and condition. Our Parks Director, Morris Heidi, is here if you have more involved questions. We're happy to get you an answer, but...
No, thank you. I just wanted to be sure that this is part of our regular scheduled cadence and we'll just be replacing, because it's a busy park, replacing our equipment there. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, I approve, I move approval of item number seven.
Thank you. We've got a motion for approval of item number seven. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion and a second for item number seven. Any discussion on item number seven? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number seven.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number seven is approved. Six in favors, zero opposed. That brings us to item number nine. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to start with moving approval of item number nine.
Thank you very good. We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion and a second for item number nine. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Deputy City Manager Reynolds, I'm going to just ask, I bring this item to the forefront. I see that there are several items on here where we are investing in our water system. These are some of our scheduled capital improvement plans. And I know that you have a five-year schedule that you are marching through to do replacements and upgrades, and those happen as directed. I wondered if you could just give an overview of what this particular item is, only because of the size of the investment.
I would be happy to. And as you mentioned again, this is part of our capital improvement program. We have actually a six-year outlook for replacement of equipment and timelines associated with each piece of equipment and the lifespan in which it should be replaced. So we're not replacing things when they've hit catastrophic failure, and then it's an emergency situation and more costly. But in an attempt to break from municipal services roots and give someone else a chance to explain these things, Deputy Director Matt McLaughlin is here to give you some more details about well rehab and all of the investments going on at Courtney Bend.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Matt McLaughlin, Deputy Director of Municipal Services. This project involves the rehabilitation of five of our forty-four wells that we operate at Courtney Bend Water Plant to provide the water, drinking water, for our citizens and also our twelve wholesale customers. This is part of our annual preventative maintenance program. This involves basically making sure that these wells operate efficiently and effectively and reliably. These wells have a life of typically around fifty years, but every eight to ten years they require some preventative maintenance to keep them, like I said, operating efficiently. In order to do that, we must pull the pumping unit, rehabilitate the well itself, overhaul that pumping unit, then reinstall it. By doing this, again, this helps and makes sure that we have those pumps and those wells available in times of high demand, so all of our wells are continuing to operate efficiently.
It's sometimes easy to overlook these because they're on the consent agenda, and we move through them because they're not very sexy to talk about. But, you know, there's more than a million dollars of regular activity that we have on here that doesn't catch the eye of the average citizen. So just for making sure people understand, these are all within the budget, that they are planned for over time, that they have presented to the Public Utility Advisory Board and been recommended by them to the council. So there has been a march of accountability. So there has been a march of accountability and planning.
Yes, correct. We have a preventative maintenance, an annual program, if you will. So, just like the painting projects that you see on there and their filter rehab, we do these so that we can plan for the future. We do one a year of the basin painting, one a year of the filter painting, and then, like I said, five of our wells each year. That keeps us able to manage and we don't have a fear of having catastrophic failures where it's going to cost us more in the long run by not doing that preventative maintenance when it's necessary, so, yeah.
Fantastic, thank you very much. No more questions?
Thank you. Anyone else have other comments or concerns? Seeing no other further discussion on item number nine. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number nine passes six in favors, zero opposed. This brings us to item number fifteen. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me begin by moving approval of item number fifteen.
Thank you, we've got a motion for item number fifteen, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, we've got a motion and a second for item number fifteen. Councilmember McCandless, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to start, I think people often don't understand what Mid-America Regional Council does. This is a collaboration of nine counties in the area that let us do things that take regional planning. So this is how we do stormwater, this is how we do some electric planning, it's how we do...our 911 system comes through Mid-America Regional Council Head Start. Funding comes through that, some of our dollars flow through from the feds for our senior meals. And this is one of those examples of dollars coming down from the federal government to allow us to do additional work on sidewalks and streets. Deputy City Manager, would you just give an overview of what this project is going to do for 23rd Street? Would you also talk about what our investment is compared to theirs and how much disruption the community should expect?
Absolutely. So this project we're very excited about, it will ultimately, through several phases over time, install sidewalks from 23rd Street from Spec all the way to Sterling. This is done through, as you mentioned, Mid-America Regional Council provided the bulk of the funding in $13.4 million in grants. Those grants come from several different pieces and programs that Mark has. They come from surface transportation block grants, congestion mitigation and air quality grants, carbon reduction program, a host of things, as well as some developer money in around Hub Drive in that piece of those sidewalks as well. So, again, providing sidewalks and some ADA compliance with pedestrian crossings and things like that from Spec to Sterling along 23rd.
And how long do you think it'll take and should people who are driving notice a lot of change?
We try and stay out of the roadway as much as possible, I'll look at Matt again. But, again, this is sidewalk work, not roadway work, so we should be off and out and working in...on the parking lot sides instead of in the roadway. But as always, construction will slow. We will notice this, we will have public meetings related to these portions. It will take, I would say, at least three years to complete all of this work. And also, I didn't want to forget, you asked about the city's match. We're only asked to, on especially the Spec to Jackson Drive, the city only has to put in $20,000 and we get $2 million. So, only a 1% match in that instance. So, massive opportunity and no other way that we could possibly fund this, these projects.
So my great appreciation to your teams for looking for every single grant opportunity we have to stretch the dollars. It's easy to just look at our fiscal note for what the city has, but you guys really extend our work, so hats off to you. I'll be delighted to support this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item number fifteen? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number sixteen.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number fifteen passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to our regular agenda. We've got a full public hearing, I'll open this public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code relating to the Historic Square District, full public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo, I'm the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This code amendment was considered by Planning Commission on July 29th of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this amendment. This is an amendment that is a revision to our existing Historic Square District standards that better aligns with the square master plan that was recently adopted. It does provide guidelines for future development and redevelopment in that area, designing things like guidance for building standards, lot standards, parking standards, facade compositions. And it's specifically tailored for the Independence Historic Square. So with that, I have no new information to provide.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? Okay. This is a full public hearing, meaning that I'll call this three times. For anyone to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for information purposes only on the public hearing on the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14. Second call, anyone want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for information purposes only? Third and final call. Anyone want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for information purposes only on Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code relating to the Historic Square District? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed with 25-078.
25-078, second reading, an ordinance repealing Section 14-901 HSQ District and adding a new Section 14-901 HSQ District of the Unified Development Ordinance, second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. Arroyo, you talked about making it consistent and I want to be sure people kind of get a sense of the sorts of things that are changing in this. Can you outline those for us?
Yes, so what this is, is basically a district that currently, right now, the historic district is all C2, so somebody would have to adopt this as a zoning. But we do currently have this in our code, and so this is an update to that. So what this really does is it takes a look at that downtown master plan and it matches with that plan what we want to see with particular buildings. So for example, height restrictions and/or the facades, how we want those facades to look and how we want parking in the rear, how we want to see setbacks to some of these existing buildings. And what it does is it helps any redevelopment in the Historic Square to essentially match more of what that Historic Square looks like. So currently, it's C2, so if somebody wanted to do something different there, they would have to meet that C2 zoning district standard. Be very difficult to do that without some kind of planned unit development or a bunch of different variances. And so what this does is it actually makes that a little bit easier for developers to, if they do want to redevelop, whether it's commercial or some sort of residential in these different zones that were set up with that downtown master plan, makes it easier to meet that standard without having to go through all those different variance processes.
And it also makes it easier for them to understand if they're going to bring their money here, what sorts of things are expected from them on the front end so that they can do their planning better. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, any questions? Any further discussion on 25-078? Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 25-078 passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to another public hearing, we'll open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the application to rezon the property at 1316 South Osage Street from R6 Single Family Residential to R6/PUD Single Family Residential/Planned Unit Development and approve a preliminary development plan, new information only.
Thank you again, this rezoning was also considered by Planning Commission on July 29th of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this. This is basically an existing building that's been used as a house of worship since about the 1950s. Currently, it's an R6 Zone District, which means it can...religious establishment can exist in that. However, this is the group that chooses, that is wanting to do this daycare. The daycare will have more than 20 children in it, and so that would normally require a higher zoning district. And so therefore, this request is for an R6 PUD to allow the use of that daycare center for 20 children or more. I have no new information to provide.
Thank you. And this was a new information-only public hearing, so we'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed with 25-079.
25-079, second reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R6 Single Family Residential to District R6/PUD Single Family Residential/Planned Unit Development and approving a preliminary development plan for the property located at 1316 South Osage Street, second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this ordinance? Please proceed.
Sorry, I have so many questions tonight. First, I've had the privilege of meeting with pastors Sabrina and Michael Jones with their plans for Render's Hope Day School. The Missouri Chamber of Commerce calls out preschool as one of their most important investment opportunities for the state of Missouri for increasing employment and increasing new businesses. Community has told us repeatedly that having high-quality pre-K is really important to them and certainly the school district is recognizing pre-K as one of the most important things for having children ready to go to school. This will be early Head Start and Head Start spots, 49 of them. Mid-America Regional Council actually gave them a grant in order to help get this property ready. They recognized them as one of their Head Start partners. So I am extremely pleased to be able to vote yes for this, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on 25-079? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 25-079.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 25-079 passes six in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to a new public hearing, I'll open this public hearing. Mr. Arroyo, please proceed.
A public hearing for the special use permit application to operate a bed and breakfast at 3417 South Denton Road, new information only.
Thank you again. This is a special use permit that has been considered by Planning Commission also on July 29th. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this special use permit request. And again, this applicant does wish to operate a bed and breakfast at 3417 South Denton. Applicant will also need to meet all health and safety standards, along with all fire code inspections. And with that, I have no new information to provide.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close this public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed with 25-080.
25-080, second reading, an ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a bed and breakfast at 3417 South Denton Road in Independence, Missouri, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 25-080?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Just a question, has there been any...any request or any kind of a voice from the neighborhood of concern? Visited with Councilmember Perkins earlier and he did not believe there had been, but I just wanted to double-check on that.
I have not received anything and staff hasn't, as far as I'm aware of.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Further questions or discussion? Okay, Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 25-080 passes six in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to a full public hearing, we'll open the public hearing. Please proceed.
A public hearing for the Nolan South Shopping Center Community Improvement District Five-Year Budget Amendment, full public hearing.
Good evening. David Martin, Gilmore and Bell Service Bond and Economic Development Council to the city. We're here tonight on a developer petition to add projects to the existing Nolan South Shopping Center CID. This is an entity that was created in 2022 with a 1% sales tax. It's a smaller multi-property district that's located at the intersection of 45th and Nolan Road. It was originally set up with a blighted area finding so that funds can be used for improvement of either public or private components of the project. And it had about a $2.5 million budget. The request tonight is that a couple of project items be added to that budget and expand to approximately $4.5 million. We have representatives of the property owner and developer here that are going to give you a little more detail and an explanation for the reason for the request.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Brian Engel, I'm with the Ross Fretz Weigoss Law Firm in Kansas City, and I am counsel to the CID. And would just like to add that there are two action items in the proposed ordinance. One is to update the existing five-year plan budget to add the additional improvements that David Martin mentioned. And those improvements are internal improvements to the existing buildings. There are some maintenance items within those buildings that will need attention either now or in the future. And so this change to the budget will allow for the use of CID funds for that purpose. The second item is related, it also deals with amending the budget that is attached to the cooperative agreement previously approved between the city, the developer, and the CID. With me this evening is Chris Schenk, who is the property owner. And so we're both available to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm Christopher Schenk, I'm the family representative of Nolan South Shopping Center, which has been started by my father-in-law 52 years ago. So our roots are pretty deep in this community and given the council's willingness to partner with us on the CID, it's been really very, very helpful. We've redone the signage, we've redone the parking lot, and we've redone the landscaping, if you've been down there. And the first speaker tonight talked about the good, the bad, and the ugly of Nolan Road. She didn't mention us, but I think it's one of the good stories of Nolan Road if you've been down there. So I think we're very much committed, and I think if we can amend the CID in the manner that's been described in technical detail, but in practical terms, if we can expand it to allow us to do some more work with the roofs of the HVA systems, that'll be very, very helpful in continuing to allow us to invest in this property, which as I say, we've been doing for 52 years and hope to continue on. So, that's basically it. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about it, but it's certainly been a great assistance to us. And I hope it also serves the community purpose of improving the look of Nolan Road as you move south from I-70. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about what's going on or what we plan to do.
Anyone have any questions? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know where your shopping center or shopping area is, but just for anybody listening, let's be crystal clear that yours is not Nolan Fashion Square.
No, no.
This is north of that space.
It's north of that. Where Mama Garden is, where Tandy, where Honey Bake Ham is, everybody lines up at Thanksgiving. And we have to have wonderful police... everybody lines up at Thanksgiving, and we have to have wonderful police organization to make sure everybody gets their hams. But no, we're in, you know, we've got really two properties. We've got the one immediately south, the small strip center, and then we've got the major center where we've got Harbor Freight's our main anchor tenant, and that's quite a venue for the DIY folks and also small contractors who come up there. So, and then we did have Apex Brewery on the corner there, right across from Harvest Bank. We now, that's been vacant, but we now have a new tenant taking over who's going to maintain the same concept starting in February. So we're pretty optimistic about how things are out there. We're renewing our tenants. We're trying to do what we can to support them, and so you all are doing your part too with the CID to help sort of support what's going on out there. But we, it's a family project. It's a garden, and we tend the garden, and you all are helping us, I think, fertilize those roots to keep it going. Thank you.
And one more question. Just for clarification, you are not asking for an additional CID? You are not asking for additional money? You're just asking for reallocation of the current funds?
Yeah, we're asking that the CID amended to be, so that what would be eligible for reimbursement would be what's going to be in the future fairly substantial work on the roof and the HVA systems, many of which are 30 years old. So that's really what we're doing. We're not seeking a big thing. We're just trying to take a little bit more modest approach to what we might be entitled to obtain from reimbursement.
Thank you very much.
So that answers your question, council?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else other further questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
All this work that you're talking about, how much, what kind of cost are you expecting to, how much do you expect it to cost?
Well, I really, I don't, I don't know. I mean, you know, if the roofs are, you're talking three, four, or $500,000 to do the roofs. We've got two large roof areas, one over Harbor Freight and the other over kind of where Octo Pharma is on the south side. So you've got an expansive area of roof, and as I say, you've also got HVAC units that are quite old, and so that would be very helpful. Does that answer your question? I can't be more specific than that, but it's a major, you know, the roof of that size, commercial roof's a major expense.
You haven't received any estimates so far?
No, because we haven't, we haven't, we haven't yet gone to draw on the CID and probably don't have immediate plans to draw on it. We just want to make sure that when inevitably it happens, that would be a reimbursable expense.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else other further questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'm not sure who this needs to be addressed to, but is it typical for CID to expand its plan to cover interior systems like roofs and HVAC?
It is not atypical to expand projects after the initial authorization. So while the particulars of this circumstance, you know, specifically roofs and HVAC, I'm not going to say that I do one of these every week, but it's not out of the norm of what we would see for implementation to occur and then later to come back and amend the budget.
Okay. Because I've been looking at CID information, and I haven't seen anything about interior stuff, but that's, I mean, I have just started looking into that. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else other further questions? Councilmember Fears or Councilmember Wiley? I want to give you the chance in case you have any questions. Anyone else going forward? Okay. This is a full public hearing, and so we'll need to call out to anyone who would like to come forward and chat on this topic. Anyone want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for information purposes only. That is first call. There'll be two more calls. Anyone want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for information purposes only? That's the second out of three. Here we go for three out of three, and I'm looking around to see if anybody has that look in their eye like they may want to come forward. Third and final call. Anyone want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for information purposes only on this full public hearing on Nolan South Shopping Center Community Improvement Development District? Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed with 25-084.
25-084, first reading. An ordinance approving the petition to amend the five-year budget for the Nolan South Shopping Center Community Improvement District, making findings and authorizing other actions and approving the First Amendment to the Cooperative Agreement among the City of Independence, Missouri, the Nolan South Shopping Center Community Improvement District, and the Nolan South Development Company, LLP. First reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? I've got a quick question, if I may please. Thank you. And my question is, CID's are set up for a specific timeframe. They do sunset. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And what's the timeframe set for this one?
So this would have been within the period where the maximum was 27 years. So I think that puts us just shy of 2050.
Okay. And is this one at 1%?
That's correct.
Okay. So the way this works, so tell me how it works for the CID and how the money is collected and how it goes into the CID, so people that are watching know how the process works, if you may please.
Sure. So the 1% sales tax was voted on by the owners of the property within the area. It is imposed on those properties, and so each business within that area collects that sales tax and remits it to the Department of Revenue, which then remits it to the CID to hold in a sales tax fund for expenditures solely for purposes that are authorized under their five-year plan, which is what we're amending tonight. So then the CID has the power to make expenditures. Typically, that's reimbursement of the property owner or developer, which it is in this circumstance. The board of the CID can vote to approve costs that are submitted by that entity and then reimburse those costs so long as they're within that five-year plan.
Okay. So it's the board who comes forward with the plan. Could the city council come forward with a plan and say, "We'd like to see you do this with the CID"?
So the city council could certainly make a suggestion to the CID board of future projects. Now, in order to approve a future project, you have to go through the same amendment process, which requires a majority of the property owners by assessed valuation and per capita to sign a petition to make that revision. So it's not as simple as a CID board simply passing a resolution to move forward with an additional project.
So in this particular situation, they've gone through this entire process contacting all the owners to ask for this amendment to be approved by those owners. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And how many owners are in the CID district, please?
I believe it's just a single owner. Is that accurate?
Okay. So once you have your approval, then we're good. And then everyone, all the businesses in there rent from this one owner?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. I just wanted to understand how it worked in that way, how it works for citizens and how the money is collected. Okay.
Yeah, and just to give you some assurances. So, I mean, I'm the treasurer. I write the checks. So what happens is the Missouri Department of Revenue disposes this in a specific account at Central Bank, and then I'm entitled to pay certain expenses out of there that are authorized by the statute. And then once I do that, that all gets audited. We have an accountant that has to make sure I'm doing my job. There's an audit every year that gets reported to the state of Missouri. So there's a number of checks and balances in there to make sure that the money is allocated, spent, you know, and is appropriately spent for the statutory purposes. So I appreciate the question. It is a little bit of an opaque procedure, and I didn't know anything about it until I actually got started in it and started doing it. But I appreciate the question because it is a matter probably of general interest.
Yeah, I think people watching want to say, "How does this work and what's the process?" And this gives them the opportunity to do that, and so I really, really appreciate the clarity on the issue.
Sure. Anything else, Judge?
I don't know anything else, but it looks like your council does want to clarify one question.
And just to reiterate some of the points that Chris made, under the cooperative agreement, any reimbursements also have to be approved by the city, and that's done administratively. And so once those costs are incurred and they're approved by the CID, the city manager or the director of development also signs off on those reimbursement requests under the cooperative agreement.
And then if I may, another further question, because I want to know how CID's work and how this, I want folks to know how they work. So I know you've got one business owner here, and a number of the CID's we have with the City of Independence have a number of business owners. Does this CID have a board, per se, or does it have just one owner who operates the CID? How's the, what's the structure?
So it does have a board. Brian, do you know the makeup of the board?
There are five members on the board, which is pretty typical. Sometimes you see a larger board, but usually it's five, and there is, they're all, four are representatives of the property owner, and then there's a fifth who is a resident of the city who's independent of the property owner, and that's a new requirement in the statute as well.
Okay. So very good. Thank you. I don't have any further questions, but I don't know if my colleagues have any further questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Oh. Do you know how much money the CID has collected at this point?
I don't have detailed records on collections, but it generates roughly between $14,000 to $16,000 a month in sales tax collections.
$14,000 to $16,000 a month. And how much of that has been expended? Is there anything left at this point?
Well, right now, the sales tax went into effect, I believe, in late 2022, or might have been early 2023. And so as those funds are collected, they're deposited by the state into a checking account, and then those funds are available to reimburse the developer as those costs are incurred on the project side.
Right.
And so it's a, it's kind of like paying down a mortgage. The revenue that's collected has to pay out in small amounts over a period of time to reimburse the developer because those improvements have high upfront costs, and then the developers reimburse slowly over time as those collections come in from the sales tax.
Okay. Thank you.
I know. I mean, it's a little bit shy of $500,000 has been collected so far, and all the, most, all the money has been paid out to the landscaping company, and actually the biggest expense has been to Paradise Asphalt for redoing the parking lot. So, I mean, the money that comes in, Paradise has been great working with us. So the money that comes in, it basically goes right now to Paradise Asphalt. But, you know, so that's about what we've done. He's generally correct, but I have a little bit better sense since I'm actually paying the bills.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other further que, any further questions? Councilmember Wiley, Councilmember Fears? Okay. Anyone else other further questions? I do thank you for the indulgence, and those watching, thank you for the indulgence of all the questions. If there's no further questions, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 25-084. First reading. Thank you very much. And we've also got, and please proceed on the next one.
25-076, second reading. An ordinance levying a tax on all real property subject to taxation on January 1, 2025, within the corporate limits of the City of Independence, Missouri, for all general revenue and public health and recreation purposes, for general obligation debt, and for the Independence Square Special Benefit District. Said levies and assessments being separate and distinct, all for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of July 2025 and ending the 30th day of June 2026. Second reading.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, I have put in front of the council amended language for this. We have just received the data from the county to be able to help us set our levy, and so those had to be adjusted based on the corrected numbers we've received from the county. Ms. Reynolds, is there anything that you'd like to add to that before we move forward with the amendment?
No, just that this is typical of our process every year with having to notice the public hearing and getting everything on the agenda. We notice the public hearing to meet the time restraints, but don't always have the most accurate numbers from the counties at the time. So now we have the updated values from Jackson and Clay Counties and can move forward.
All right. Thank you. So I submit this amendment for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Second?
We've got a motion and a second for this amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? If we could, Deputy City Manager, if I may ask, could we have our finance director kind of talk about the differences and what's the adjustments, things like that, if I could, please?
Certainly. Finance Director Melissa Cabrera is joining us virtually this evening, but is ready to answer any questions you have about this item.
Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I just want to make sure everyone can hear me. Yes, perfect. Okay. So, yes, Deputy City Manager Reynolds hit the nail right on the head. So what happens is we have to notice this hearing and have a first reading on this ordinance before we have the finalized numbers back from the county. So what you will see on the final ordinance is the numbers are just slightly different. It makes a, quite a small impact on what the final taxes due to the city will be at the end of the year. And what we have to do is, once we have this final AV numbers, we submit a pro forma to the state auditor's office so that they can verify and make sure that we do not exceed the property tax amount that is set. So once I can verify that my numbers match what they say that we can set, then I bring it back to you on an amended ordinance for final approval. And then after that, it goes once again to the counties, which they send to the state auditor's office just to make sure that we're in compliance with Hancock Amendment not exceeding what we can set for the property tax levies. And then those tax bills will go out on November 1st, once everyone is settled that we have the correct rates.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Anyone else other questions? And I see on the amendment a number of red numbers. Do you mind going through those, please? We can talk about the differences in the middle form.
Let me pull that up. So you will see there on the final page where it says the 2025 tax rate per $100 of assessed value. You can see that essentially what happens is Jackson County is going through and hearing appeals on, you know, the assessed valuations that they set for homeowners, for businesses. That will cause the final AV to tick down from the initial numbers, and so because we can only increase our revenues by what is set as CPI by the state, you start to see that AVs go down, and then our tax levy can go up a little bit. So initially, we expected the general revenue amount to be .3281, and the final rate will be .3301. For our public health and recreation, initially it was set at .1546. We expect, or now we verified that that can be .1556. The debt service levy actually ticked down. So we have, this is for our GO bonds. We had final numbers that we received from the bond sale, and we're able to establish that that debt service levy will actually be slightly lower than initially projected. And so it went from .1829 down to .1800. And then lastly, on the Independence Square Benefit Business District, instead of the .5679, that has ticked down to .5195.
Thank you. Then it mentions in sections one, two, and three, you've got some red numbers there. So if you can just explain those two and the changes in the amendment, I'd be grateful.
Sure. So above in the whereas section, those are not finalized numbers. Down below, you know, in each section, those are just the numbers that you see above. So section one is the general purpose or general revenue levy at .3301. Section two is for public health and recreation. Section three is for the Independence Square Benefit District, and then section four is that debt service levy for the general obligation debt.
Thank you. Anyone else other further questions on the amendment? Councilmember Fears or Councilmember Wiley? Councilmember Fears or Councilmember Wiley, any questions? Any questions here? Okay, we have an amendment, we have a motion and a second. And so Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the amendment to twenty-five zero seven six is in fact approved. So we will now talk about twenty-five zero seven six as amended. And please proceed. Anyone have any questions or comments on twenty-five zero seven six? As amended. Seeing no discussion on twenty-five zero seven six. This is the second reading, so Madam City Clerk, if I see no discussion, please proceed with the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, twenty-five zero seven six passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to twenty-five zero seven seven. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero seven seven, second reading. An ordinance finding determining and declaring the necessity of acquiring general utility easements and temporary construction easements for the annual neighborhood sanitary sewer project, project number three zero two zero zero four dash one, authorizing negotiation with property owners and the initiation of eminent domain proceedings. If necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, and authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in connection with the project, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on twenty-five zero seven seven? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five zero seven seven is approved, six in favor, zero opposed. Brings us to twenty-five zero eight one. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero eight one, second reading. An ordinance authorizing the city clerk to do all things necessary for the holding of a primary and general election within the City of Independence, Missouri, in compliance with the charter adopted by said city, as amended, and all state laws in reference thereto. And to certify to the Jackson County Board of Election Commissioners all names of candidates properly presented by petitions under the charter and for the holding of a primary election, election on February third, 2026, and a general election on April seventh, 2026, second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on these items? And Madam City Clerk, if I may clear, ask for clarification for folks. When does the filing open and when does it close? Just for folks who might be interested for filing for City Council.
Anyone who wants to petition to be on the ballot can start picking up packets tomorrow morning at eight o'clock. The first filing date with the Board of Elections, you will bring the packets to the city clerk, is October the seventh, and the last is October twenty eighth.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-five zero eight one.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five zero eight one passes six in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero eight two, first reading. An ordinance adopting the attached schedule of sanitary sewer rates with the first change scheduled for all bills dated November first, 2025, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'd like to propose an amendment to this. I understand it's first reading, but I think it's appropriate to do this so we can have it for consideration before second reading. The amendment would read as follows. Section two, that beginning in 2031, annual sanitary sewer rate increases will be tied directly to the federal government's Consumer Price Index, but shall not exceed three percent. And so just for an explanation, what we're trying to avoid are long periods of time where there's no adjustments in rates, even though the cost for operating the utilities continue to rise. And then what we have are larger increases that are really hard for people to absorb. Most municipalities have gone to a slow graduated increase in rates. So it is both predictable for businesses and clients, and it can be rolled back. So it's an up to. If the municipality doesn't need those dollars for their projected expenses, there's no reason that they have to increase it by CPI. Although that probably would take an additional vote of the council to have less of an increase, is that fair?
It would once this changes, if this changes approved.
Okay. But what I don't want is a year with whopping inflation for people to see a five percent or a six percent increase in their municipal rates without a vote of the council. So by putting a lid on it that it can't be higher than three percent, if the council decided that it needed more, it would have to come to a vote. So that way there would be transparency in those big years. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Madam Deputy City Manager, if you could explain this a little bit for me and for, for citizens, basically how it'll work.
Point of order.
Please proceed.
I don't believe you have a second yet.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll second it.
I'll make a second on this.
Thank you very much. Councilmember, thank you very much, excellent work. So we've got a motion and a second now, and I'll proceed with the questions. So if you can kind of give me a, kind of a how this will work and, and from year to year to year.
Okay, so specifically, the portion that's tied to the Consumer Price Index would be just tied to the general Consumer Price Index, not the utility one that was discussed during the rate presentation in study session with PUAB, which is actually usually a higher number. So trying to keep this manageable for our customers, but also trying to avoid, as Councilwoman McCandless said, large increases from going several years without any increase. So basically what this does is if the national, if the federal Consumer Price Index goes, is two percent, then rates would adjust by two percent. Now, this wouldn't kick in until 2031, which would be after the recommended changes that are also before you in the original ordinance. And both of these have been presented to the Public Utility Advisory Board and to the council in regular PUAB meeting and in study session. I hope that answers your question, but if you have additional, I'm happy to try and answer them.
That works. And then how did, did PUAB take a vote on it, or?
Unanimously supported by the PUAB.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much. Any further discussion or questions on this?
I do have a question. So did the PUAB, the PBUAB did not take action on this amendment, did they?
They haven't seen the amendment. When it was presented and they took their vote, this was part of the recommendation to them, was to tie it to the Consumer Price Index. The amendment simply adds the language to cap it at the three percent. So to your point, Councilmember Fears, no, they haven't seen the cap on it. But they did unanimously support this rate ordinance and tying it to the Consumer Price Index.
But just to be clear, if we were to approve this amendment and then the ordinance was approved, then the, the function of the amendment would be that the cap on any increase on an annual basis would be three percent. But the council could then, if needed, you know, override that. Would that be an accurate assessment?
Yes, that would be accurate, as it would be in ordinance directly tied to the Consumer Price Index and capped at three percent. If we were going to, if we were going to take more than the three percent or request more than the three percent, or if the Consumer Price Index was two percent and we said we needed no increase that year, either of those circumstances would come back to the body.
Thank you.
And Mr. City Counselor, just a point of clarification here. If a council, city council in the future, prior to 2031, decided not to proceed, they could reverse all this action if they chose to?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that, they could do that at any time.
Yeah, it, this is, this is an ordinance and a future council could decide to change that, correct?
Perfect, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion on the amendment of twenty-five zero eight two? Seeing no further discussion on the amendment on twenty-five zero eight two. If there's no further discussion, I will proceed for a roll call. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
No. Twenty-five zero eight two passes five in favor, one opposed. And this is first read.
That was just the amendment, correct?
That was just the amendment.
Okay, just making sure we're on the same page.
Right, that was twenty-five zero eight two as amended. It was the first reading, so it will be amended for the second reading when we come to that.
Okay, got it. Sounds good, thank you.
So just for clarification, that was twenty-five zero eight two. Today was the first reading. Councilmember McCandless amended it. And that was the amendment that would, and the amendment was passed five in favor, one opposed. And that then, everything good?
Yes, sir. So we will now have a second reading as amended at the next meeting.
Bingo.
Perfect, yeah, that sounds good, thank you.
No. I love the clarification, that way people who are watching, they may have had the same question, and that way everybody's in the same hymnal, same page. I'd rather have clarity than fog. Very good. Brings us to twenty-five zero eight three. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero eight three, first reading. An ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, which was approved by ordinance number one nine five six one, first reading. Twenty-five dash zero eight five, first reading. An ordinance approving a rezoning from District R thirty slash PUD, high-density residential slash planned unit development, and District C two, general commercial, to District R six, single-family residential for the properties located at seven one zero and seven two zero, West Maple Avenue, first reading. Twenty-five dash zero eight six, first reading. An ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter fourteen of the Independent City Code pertaining to motor vehicle repair and gasoline fuel sales, first reading. Twenty-five dash zero eight seven, first reading. An ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a gas station at four zero two three South Nolan Road, Independence, Missouri, first reading.
Thank you. If I may ask you to hold just there, just a second. We do have Mr. Michael Rubenstein here from the Wally's Corporation. If there is in fact any questions that councilmembers would like to ask regarding the Wally's proposed development. So just give him an opportunity if there's any questions. If not, that is perfectly fine, but...
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Well, I'll ask questions if nobody else is going to. So first of all, I just want to thank Mr. Rubenstein for setting up a meeting with his traffic engineer today. I appreciate that, it was very helpful. Very, got some good clarification on a number of questions there. And was able to, was just able to answer some questions there. Mr. Rubenstein, I think the primary question that I have and what I hope that you'll be able to clear up for us, at least maybe prior to two weeks from tonight, when we, when we would vote on this, is, you know, we've heard a number of citizens say that, you know, Wally's isn't asking the city for any assistance, has, isn't asking for any financial help or anything of that nature. At the Planning Commission, I heard you kind of indicate that there might be something that you would be asking for, but it wasn't clear to me. And so I wondered if you could provide any clarity in that regard relative to, you know, will Wally's be asking for any, you know, use of TIF, TDD, SID, ETS, anything else that might come into play? And if that's premature, I understand. But I think, at least for this council member, I would like some understanding on that prior to having to vote on the, the, the special use permit. So if, if you have any information you can share, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, thank you, Councilman Fears. As it was referenced, we bought, when we bought the property, we had no expectations. We went into it in good faith. As Ms. Young referenced, there's over two million dollars in back taxes that were paid to the schools. The demo was done for this, for this blighted area. And then as we got into the project, there's obviously been robust improvements that are needed on city and state property. And so we are not looking for any city-backed incentives. We, you know, a lot of developers, when they look for incentives, they're looking to lower their cost of development to make a project more profitable. We are and have been for, you know, I think upwards of six months and even long before that in discussions, saying that as we look to improve city property, there are certain incentive programs that we look to potentially monetize. There's various conversations going on with other interested, you know, parties as the city, different other CID's. And so we looked forward to that robust conversation in order, how do we make the public roads the best possible situation for everyone? And so I think the short answer is, yes, we're looking at incentives. They're not, we are not looking for any city-backed guarantees. Everything will be backed by us. We're not looking to lower the cost of the development. We are looking to help defray the very robust and expensive off-site improvements that include Excel and Dcell lanes off of I seventy that are very dangerous situations. In my opinion, this should be, you know, a MoDOT responsibility. We're taking on that ourselves. But to be able to utilize various programs available, that is something that we have consistently, you know, as we've met with the city, indicated that we would pursue.
So in that regard, will you be able to clearly articulate what you're going to be asking for by our time of having to vote on this on the twenty, or on the, in October?
Councilman Fears, we, we intend to. We are waiting, you know, obviously to, to understand, you know, what groups are going to work with us and how they're going to work with us. But I think just like the demolition, as well as the back taxes, Wally's is going to proceed in good faith. We'd hope that the city and the relevant CID also proceeds together in good faith. And, you know, we'll be the ones that are, you know, putting ourselves out there. And we would hope for support from the relevant bodies as, as we're looking to make, you know, an upwards of a forty million dollar investment in the city.
Sure, and I appreciate that, I really do. I mean, it's not, what, what you're undertaking is not insignificant in any way, shape, or form. I, I fully understand that. I guess what, you know, I think I heard at one point that, you know, a, a number of the, the taxes that you think would be generated for the city as a result of, you know, Wally's coming to Independence at some point, you know, after, after it got up and going, you know, you know, it took a little while, I'm sure, to get up and going. I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of if, if you anticipate that anticipate, that, that tax number to be reduced any as a result of the kinds of incentives that you're, that you're considering.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question. I want to make sure I answer it properly.
All right. So let me, let me make sure, let me make it clear, I'm sorry. So what I think I heard at, at one point at the Planning Commission meeting was that there was an anticipated of maybe up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in sales tax coming to the city as a result of Wally's being present in our community. So my question is, really is, you know... So my question is, really is, you know, are you anticipating any of that $120,000 being needed to, to, for the incentives that you're, that you're considering?
I actually don't recall the $120,000 that you're referencing, I mean, it wasn't something that I referenced, or someone on my team, or I recall hearing, so...
That's fair.
I, I'm happy to look at it again, but I just don't remember what you're referring to, I apologize.
Okay, well, that, I, I mean, whether the money, whether the amount is 120,000 or some other number, the, the question remains relative to what, the, to the incentive piece of it, if that's going to be reducing that number of what might come to the city.
Understood, and what I can offer is, obviously, we've had neighborhood meeting, met, had multiple pre-development meetings, we had the Planning Commission, we offered to do the study session next week, I'll, I'll make sure there's additional information available for you. I unfortunately will not be able to be there, it's the first night of the Jewish holiday of Rosh Hashanah, so I will not be here, but I will have my Director of Development here that can help make sure that those questions are answered.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Anyone else have other further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. Rubenstein, thank you for answering that question, councilmember's first question. For me, it, it was a little premature, I didn't really need the answers yet, for, to me, this is just, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam City Manager, this is just about the special use and if they can sell gasoline, correct?
That is what's before you, in this first reading, yes.
So any incentives would be a vote later on, correct?
It would.
Okay, so for me, this is, this is just a vote up or down, you know, whether or not you can sell gasoline, and the incentives for me will be addressed on a later on vote. So I do have a question, though, I've been hearing, who's obviously going to put gas tanks there, how many of those are you going to have?
So we have four gas tanks, they're all double-barreled, double-walled, above and beyond kind of the, the highest environmental measures, so there'll be four gas tanks.
Okay, so worst-case scenario, what I keep hearing is, if, you know, if your business model doesn't work out in Independence and you leave, the property would basically have no value, if you were, if worst-case scenario, and in five years, you decide to pull the plug on the Independence Project and, and leave, what would happen, I mean, what would you do with those gas tanks?
Yeah, thank you for the question, I mean, I think first and foremost, we're not a developer, so we don't leave, we're an operator, and this is, you know, the money that we're investing, so it, it's, you know, obviously, anything can happen, but, you know, that's, that's not any intention, but I think if, if, I know we have a very unique concept, and some council members or community of, of, of Independence have been able to be there, but the store is, has a lot of storefront glass, it's 42-foot vaulted ceilings, it's nicer, you know, than most grocery stores in terms of the appearance, the kitchen equipment, the bathroom, so, the building itself has an extraordinary amount of value, with the extensive build and improvements, as relates specifically to your question, the petroleum area represents less than 10% of our investment, so if the worst-case scenario happened, it's a lot easier to break things down than to put them up, and so, the process of removing these tanks is, is, is pretty, I don't want to say standard, but there is a process, there's a Missouri, Missouri has an insurance petroleum fund that can help handle any, you know, potential endemities for future buyers, so the actual process of removing the tanks is, is pretty, you know, I would say it's a, a couple months, and it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not less.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have other further questions? Please proceed.
At our upcoming study session, will you talk more about the Missouri Indemnity Fund? I think that would help reassure people that should this not come all the way through, or it sunsets earlier than we wanted it to, that we'd be able to have a clean site, that we could sell to another developer, so, well, that you would sell to another developer, because we do not own the land.
Yes, Councilwoman, I'll make sure we have, we're prepared for that.
Anyone else have other further questions? I know, councilmember, we're actually talking about the special use permit for the gas, but I want to ask a clarifying question about the funding, if I may, just for a second. So I heard you say that in earlier meetings and clarification from myself, that you didn't anticipate having special incentives, because you didn't anticipate the request that the MoDOT would make with regards to the on and off ramps of I-70, from the, from the perspective of, that is typically the Department of Transportation's job within the state of Missouri, so you were kind of surprised by that, and you had to pay for it somehow or some way, am I hearing you correctly in that regard, that, you know, when you first came to Independence and you bought the property, that wasn't in your game plan of, oh, I'm going to have to repair I-70 in order to operate here?
I, I wouldn't say it wasn't in our game plan, we didn't, you know, we were figuring out what the game plan was, and so, you know, as it evolved and we're doing our due diligence, and we saw, you know, very clearly that, that overpass and intersection was built, you know, not to today's standards, and there's a lot of challenges with it, in, in addition to the on and off ramps, the alignment of Lynn Court, that 30-foot offset really creates a lot of traffic problems, we think that the improvements will really allow for a better flow, but, you know, we really didn't know what we were dealing with, and then as the costs started ballooning, it was clear that, you know, we needed to, to, you know, have discussions.
Perfect. Mr. Kovar, if I can ask a question, if I may, please?
Yes, sir.
We've had a lot of developers come to the city, and they actually asked for TIFs and things like that, and those TIFs went in order to make their project profitable, if I may correct?
The, yes, those incentives were deemed necessary in order for the projects to be, to be feasible or profitable, yes, sir.
Right, and in this example here, these incentives, as they're being somewhat proposed in the discussions that I've had, these are being used primarily just for the, the improvements of the roadways going in and out, and also the interstate going there, if I'm correct, and not for you to make this a profitable location like some developers have used and we've approved in the past?
Yeah, I think, in respect to, to his answer, it's more of the former, to make the project feasible.
Okay, but you've got to do those, but make it feasible, because you've got to do the, the public improvement projects portions of it.
Public improvement, you know, we talked about the overpass, the Excel and Dcel, Lynn Court, Canterbury, which is currently a private road, and a problem, and so, you know, working to resolve all those issues.
Okay, very good. Anyone else have any further questions, I know I went down the financing path, but I wanted to get those questions answered. Anyone else? Okay, that is just a first read, so, Mr. Rubenstein, thank you very much, unless anyone else has any questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-086, first reading, an ordinance to adjust the City of Independence Power and Light Department customer charge to be effective for the monthly billing period beginning January 1, 2026, under which the charge will be increased by $5 for rate classifications MR1 and MR5, i.e. residential, and increased by $10 for rate classification MG1, MG2, MG3, MG4, and MG5, i.e. commercial slash, slash industrial, first reading.
Thank you. That brings us to councilmember comments, councilmember Stewart, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I was shopping at Sunfresh the other day, and I was looking at the bottom of the cart for some reason, I noticed a little, this little contraption attached to the wheel, and there was this sign that said something about if this cart leaves the business without going through the register, it'll stop at the door, so it got me thinking, we had passed an ordinance back in 2022, 2023, related to shopping carts, and I'm not sure if the Deputy City Manager has the information on this, but can you tell me, are businesses complying with that ordinance, and if not, do we have any plan to like, kind of get them to?
I would like to call Tom Skennell, Director of Community Development, forward.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of, of the council, yes, so, the City Council passed an ordinance, I believe it was, I think, '21 or '22, that requires, if you are a establishment and you have 10 or more shopping carts, you do have to file a shopping cart plan with the city. Initially, we had good response with that, with staff turnover, some of that was, was missed, we have redoubled our, our efforts to ensure that those shopping cart plans are being filed with businesses on a annual basis when they renew their business licenses, a number of business licenses, or a number of establishments that initially filed those back in '21 or '22, continue to, to file those on an annual basis, so, again, staff is redoubling our efforts to make sure that those are being complied with, and those establishments that are not complying with that, and city staff are out there picking up those shopping carts, we are taking the steps to bring them in for an administrative hearing to discuss the ordinance requirements and what is being done to address those.
Okay, thank you. On the topic of ordinances, we also have an ordinance that prohibits soliciting for money at intersections like 23rd and 291, or, I'm sorry, 23rd and Nolan, and very, over the last couple of months, I've, I've personally seen kind of an uptick in this, like for instance, within a month span, I seen this, and these weren't, I don't believe homeless individuals, it was a group of individuals that were soliciting for money, they were doing it at 23rd and Nolan, and then I saw the same group doing it at 40 and, 40 and Nolan, and I was stopped in traffic, and they were literally walking out in traffic, walking up to cars, asking for donations, so I guess my question is, are we doing active enforcement to stop this?
We do enforce this, we'll let Acting Chief Peterson come forward and give you more specific details, but to your point, I, there does seem to be an uptick, I saw a group as well at 23rd and 291 just this afternoon between buildings, so it is seeming to be an issue.
So as part of that ordinance, there is a permit requirement for those groups that do want to solicit from intersections, it has to be approved, there are guidelines as far as their high-vis reflective clothing they have to wear, and they are not allowed to go out in traffic, if we don't see them out in traffic, or impeding traffic in any way, it's tough to enforce it, but obviously, we respond when we have calls, but if they're not permitted, then we do have an opportunity to have them leave the location.
Okay, that's all I need, I would just, I'd like to say as much as I can, you know, because it's dangerous to be out there, and I would hate to see somebody hit by a car, you know, which has happened in other cities, so...
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So, Councilmember Stewart, just to give a little feedback, the group I saw as well took pictures of them, and the City Manager's Office sent them a cease and desist letter, well, maybe it's not the, that's the fancy term for it, they said, you're from Kansas City, you don't have a permit, you're not allowed to be here, this is their second letter that they've received, and so I know that there have been efforts to work with that group to stop that activity, so...
Okay, thank you. So the last thing I had, so last week, we discussed, and I don't think I'll need you to call anybody out for this, we had a discussion last week on where our City Council meetings were going to be held, and municipal court were going to be held, now, I know municipal court is on the study session next week to do that, so I was wanting to more discuss the City Council meetings, I, I indicated that I would like to do them at the Jackson County Courthouse in their legislative asylum area, and I would still be fine with that. I guess my question is, if that doesn't work out, is the new City Hall building, is it feasible for us to do it there if we didn't have a resolution in place saying we were going to stay on the square?
It is absolutely feasible, there's space available on the first floor to make that happen, would obviously need to rescind the resolution that exists today, I have started placing phone calls with the county and the school district based on council's feedback at that study session, or that roundtable discussion, and will keep you apprised of when I receive calls back and what that information is, but yes, the municipal commons facility can accommodate council meetings, and would, is already slated to have the live streaming AV equipment to, to do the meetings in a similar fashion to here.
Okay, thank you. If the Ja, me personally, if the Jackson County thing does not work out, and you get frustrated by the situation, I would be all for just doing them to the new building, I don't think we need to rent a place, I don't think we need to keep this building open just to have the meetings, of course, that's also, we got to figure out the municipal court situation, and, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wiley, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So last week, Councilmember Perkins and I had a meeting with county officials regarding the animal shelter, this will likely be the first of many conversations about the future of the building, and I feel positive that we can work toward a sustainable solution that works for both the city and the county. I also want to add that the Animal Welfare Committee met today, and I just want to thank them, it turns out that a majority of them have already gone through volunteer training and are going to be volunteers at our shelter, which is so, is really great. I also attended the ribbon cutting for the new ER of Independence on the corner of 23rd and Lee Summit Road, I feel really lucky that we have that right in our neighborhood, it's a really beautiful city, staffed by a great team, and I think it'll make a big difference in our part of the city. And then today, I am in St. Charles, Missouri, at the Missouri Municipal League Annual Conference, I've been taking classes on retail development, aging facilities, and building resilient communities, it's been a really great learning experience, and I'm really grateful for the opportunity, and I'll just add that being here among peers and listening to the issues that other elected officials in Missouri are struggling with, I have again spent a lot of time thinking about how much I love my city, the possibilities, things we have in store for us going forward, and I feel really lucky that I get to put that feeling I have into action, and I'm really looking forward to all the possibilities, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Vaught, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to take a moment to remember and recognize Officer Blaise Madrid-Evans, who gave his life and service to our community on September 15, 2021. Those time with the Independence Police Department was short, his courage and sacrifice will never be forgotten, we are forever grateful for his dedication and for all of those who continue to serve and protect our city. And then, I have been getting some questions about the Sonic on 35th and Nolan, so I have a, a little update, so there's no exact date of when that's going to open, but they have in the last week had several final inspections, so, I believe that this means that we're getting closer to enjoining our cherry limeades and foot-long coney dogs, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember, and it made me hungry, and I missed dinner, so there we go. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To follow on to Councilmember Vaught's recognition of Officer Madrid-Evans, we know that the job that our police have is often unpredictable and dangerous, and last week, we had one of those unpredictable and dangerous events, we had a member of our community who was suicidal, who was actually shooting outside of the house, and then ended up turning the gas on, and the building blew up. I just want to say thank you to our police team who thoughtfully approached that, backed off when it was appropriate, engaged for safety when it was appropriate, none of our teammates got hurt, the neighbors didn't get injured, I know these are rare events, but I hope we take the opportunity to look at a rare event like this and think, what did we learn, what did we do well, where do we have opportunities for the future, are there other partners who need to be involved, like, obviously, I'm sure you called the gas company, and I'm sure that we tried to engage some of our mental health experts, so just really having us think about the broad range of people that we bring to emergencies like that, but would you pass our gratitude on to your team? Deputy Chief, thank you very much. Deputy Chief, thank you very much. I get a lot of questions about how do you report a codes violation? I hope everybody has the app on their phone called In Depth Now. It is easily the best tool out there for doing a quick report. You can do it anonymously if you wish to. It gives our team a lot of data because there's a map. You can put a pin in where it is that you'd like them to go look, so I hope you'll share that with your neighbors. I get questions frequently about the challenges of calling 911 along the insane no-man's-land called 40 Highway, where nobody knows where one city ends and the next city begins. It's just really a difficult spot if you make a phone call. I've been talking to Mid-America Regional Council since they do have the regional 911 approach. They are looking at some modifications to their equipment and processes that will actually tap into cell towers for where your phone is located, that will much more accurately pinpoint where you are making your call from, so that, I hope, will lead to more accurate phone triage for 911. And my last item is to say a special welcome to Carissa Smith, who is our new HR director. She has 20 years in the industry. She brings a perspective from private practice. She also has been several years with the City of Independence. She comes at the masters in strategic HR management, and I know that she will be spending some time refining and improving our HR policies and procedures, and will carry on with the work that Mike Jackson started in training and orientation. All of these things dovetail with our two objectives. One, having a group of employees who work incredibly well for our city and make government work every day, and the other, that we always are thinking about risk management. How do we do our jobs the best way for the city, for the employees, and for our residents? So welcome, Carissa. She's not here this evening, but I hope she'll get a chance to watch the comments and get our appreciation. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't reiterate a number of things that have already been mentioned, but just would add that I too am at the Missouri Municipal League Conference with Councilmember Wiley and some other staff. And, you know, we are endeavoring to learn a number of things that will help us as a city in our, in our governance, in our policymaking, in the things that we do. We, we spent a fair amount of time today talking about economic development, which is near and dear to my heart, and even spent a little time learning about social media and do's and don'ts, and so, but good things, and we're working to try to understand better ways to be, be better at, at the city government. So that's all I really have tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I've just got a couple of things, real quickly. Attended Wine Fest on Saturday. I'm not sure it's a city event, but went. Lots of people had a great time. I did not participate in the beverages that they in fact had available, so I don't know if the product was good or not. And you can in fact put that in the paper if you like. The other thing is, too, the Independence Young Matrons had their 85th anniversary, and they just do a ton of great things. They've got a website that just gives their history and their background, and they just had a wonderful event on Saturday, and was honored and privileged to be there for, to honor their 85th anniversary, and just the number of great things they have done for our city is pretty remarkable. So I wanted to, to do that. So, Madam Deputy City Manager, the floor is yours.
Just one thing to update the council on. It probably seems mundane, but it's exciting to us as staff. We did have a response to our bid for the Chrisler in Kentucky over Mill Creek Bridge. So third time's a charm, I guess. We are currently vetting that response and hope to have something before you to be voting on soon and get our first duobomb project moving. Other than that, I don't have anything for this evening.
And the folks that go along Chrisler will be very delighted to have that bridge finished. So I'm going to ask the crazy question, if it does, if the bid, and I understood a bidder, so it's a bidder, not bids.
Yes.
And so if it gets approved and we prove it as a council, what's the estimated time of completion?
We had, we had hoped to get started this year. If we can do anything on the project, obviously, we will award the contract, but as fall is nearly upon us, we will run up against winter. Also, something that will drag the timeline of this out a little, anytime we work with our partners in, at the railroad, we do have to keep in mind their schedule on the tracks for obvious safety purposes, so that always takes some extra time and coordination. So our hope would be spring of 26.
I mean, we have to go around because of the problem. Can't they go around?
I'll let them know you asked.
And I'm sure they'll be delighted. Anything else from anyone else? If not, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.